All right, we're going to call our January Board Meeting to order. And thank you all for coming. Happy New Year. Going to call a declaration of acquurum, seven members present. And welcome to this meeting of College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is to access each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That takes us to item C1. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horack. This evening, we have students from Greens Prairie Elementary School, and I'll be asking Principal Donna Barrington to introduce her students here briefly. If y'all would come on up, Donna, and Principal Jeff Noron from Rock Prairie Elementary School. So these students, after their introduction, are going to assist us with our pledges and our moment of silence. So if our board can come on around real quick. Very good. Jeff, you're going first?
I guess so.
Excellent.
All right, Mr. Horack, Mr. Martindale, members of the board. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you two rocking wranglers. These are fourth graders Jacob Martinez and Emily Alumbah. A little bit about each of them. Jacob has been at Rock Prairie all five years of his elementary school career. He is in UIL oral reading this year. His favorite subject is, don't tell me, don't tell me, it is math. No, reading. Neither of them have a least favorite, but his least favorite is social studies. And I asked them a curveball. I said, what piece of advice would you give the school system in general? He said, put your name in your lunchbox.
I like that.
Next door to him is Emily Alumbah. She's also a fourth grader. She has been at our school for the last four years. She is the vice president of our amazing student council this year. Her favorite subject is math. Her least favorite subject is reading. And her piece of, oh, she likes to trampoline outside of school. And her piece of advice for the school system is put your name in your coats and jackets.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a future principal right there. All right, I would like to introduce our two students. This is Maya Balasubramanya and Manyan. I've been practicing Balasubramanyan. And she is a third grader, and her parents are right here. And her dad is one of our watchdog dads, and so he comes to Greens Prairie. He served the faculty pancakes in August, so they're awesome program for us. And then this is Lance Bell, who is our fourth grade student, and his mom is in our pre-K department. And I'm going to let them tell you a little bit more about themselves. You ready?
One of some hobbies I like to do after school is sing. I especially love reading books, especially these three books, Harry Potter, Percy, Jackson, Wings of Fire. My favorite subject in school is ELA. And I go to Kids Club after school.
All right. And there we go. Yes, and this is Lance. And I will tell you a little bit about Lance. He sold the show at our musical, fourth grade musical, as Tex. So I'm going to let him introduce himself as well.
Hi. My favorite subject in school is science. My favorite hobbies to do outside of school are playing golf with my family and doing outdoor activities.
Okay, can you tell me your favorite line in the musical? Do you remember what you told me? All right. Okay. You ready?
Please stand for the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join us for the moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Very good. Good job. Sir? Yes, thank you. Mr. Horack, that moves us to item C2. We have some student recognitions this evening, All-State Orchestra. So here in just a moment, those students that are present and directors that we're going to recognize when Mr. Glenwinkle calls your name, if you will, come forward, receive your certificate from me on this side, and please take a moment to greet each of our board members as well. So, Mr. Glenwinkle?
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horack, members of the board, and all the guests in the audience. It is my pleasure to introduce five students who received All-State Orchestra as well as their directors. A total of five orchestra students from A&amp;M Consolidated and College Station High Schools were recently selected to perform with the Texas Music Educators Association All-State Orchestra. These students were chosen for this prestigious honor through a competitive process held this past fall across the state at district, region, and area levels. All-state is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive, representing just 2.6% of musicians who initially audition. The All-State performances will be held Saturday, February 12th, at the Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center in San Antonio as part of the TMEA clinic and convention. In addition to the performance, the All-State students will participate in three days of rehearsals directed by nationally recognized conductors during the clinic/convention. As I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Playing the viola, Sabrina Hugh. Playing the cello, Hannah John. means she had the highest cello audition score in the state of Texas. Playing violin, Andrew Kim. And for our fabulous and dedicated orchestra directors from A&amp;M Consolidated High School, And from College Station High School, Mr. Jason Hooper. Mr. Martindale, that concludes our student recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Glenwinkle. If I can get another round of applause for our students and our directors as well. So we have just a little bit more of our recognition this evening. Item C3, this is School Board Appreciation Month, and hopefully, if you've driven by any of the schools, you've seen that on the marquee. So principals, if you didn't get that on the marquee, I hope you feel pressure right this moment.
I know which ones.
You know which ones. Get with me later. The ones I drove by, I saw it, so you'll have to fill me in. We just have a little gift, a token of appreciation for each of you to thank you for your time and effort in serving our community, our school district, and the kids. It requires lots of time, preparation. You get lots of feedback, positive and negative at times, and probably the most taxing of it all is you have to put up with me. So we're very grateful for you and your service to the children of our school district. So we just have a little something for each of you real quick. So what this is framed student art from our high schools. So on the front, it says CSISD, excuse me, and some medals. CSISD, School Board Appreciation 2122. On the back, it tells you the student also and their particular campus. So we'll start with Mr. Ben. And Mr. Ben, your artwork was done by Grisham Garza, who's a seventh grader at College Station Middle School. Addison Jasperson, an eighth grader at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. Don't let them try to bribe you into a switch or anything, Ms. Nolan. This is Ms. McAdams, and the student art was Chloe Kim. She's a seventh grader at Welborn Middle School. And Mr. Hall, you're up next. Alicia Aguilar, senior at College View High School. Mr. Horack, Sloane Greeley, a 10th grader at College View High School. And we have Dr. Payne. Your student was Iris Choi, a 12th grader at College Station High School. And Mr. Decker, Claire Brightwell, 10th grader at Consolidated. And I don't know, I know they were invited. I don't know if they made it this evening. They're probably at home doing art. Do we have any of our students that did the art here with us this evening? You're trying to rush through the agenda. Very good. Just relax. Yes? This is the one month of the year that we get to say thank you, so. Well, stand, stand.
Yeah, but you kept me two and a half hours last time.
Wow. All right, I'll be taking your artwork back. All right, Mr. Glenwinkle, let's move this along, apparently. You're solo. Come on up. And then you tell everybody you did all the art, right?
All right. Please watch the video screen.
When I grow up, I want to be a zoologist with my best friend Amy.
Just find you a spot right in there in the middle.
Which one's yours?
Yeah, which one is yours? Which one is yours? One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
I might want to be a vet when I grow up.
Wait, quick. Oh. Sorry.
When I grow up.
Very good.
When I grow up.
Thank you, guys.
When I grow up.
I want to be an actress or a librarian.
I want to be a banker.
I want to be a veterinarian.
When I grow up, I want to be an NFL player like Tyree Kill and Justin Jefferson.
When I grow up, I want to be a case manager.
I want to be a veterinarian.
An electrician.
When I grow up, I want to be a computer scientist or a veterinarian.
As a student of College Station ISD.
As a student of College Station ISD.
As a student.
Of College Station ISD.
I have the tools I need to achieve my goals.
I have the tools I need.
To achieve my goals.
To achieve my goals.
I have the tools.
I have the tools I need.
I have the tools I need to achieve my goals.
I have all the tools to achieve all my goals.
I also have seven.
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 School board members.
School board members.
Seven school board members.
School board members.
To ensure my success.
To ensure my success.
I also have seven school board members to ensure my success.
To assure my success.
Thank you so much.
Gracias.
Thank you, Jeff Horack.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear Ian Payne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Camille McAdam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh Spinn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blaine Decker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine Nolan.
Thank you for believing in us.
Gracias por creer en nosotros.
Thank you.
Thank you for believing in us.
Your allergies getting, your allergies getting you, Mr. Ben? Very good.
It's dusty in here.
Very good. Thank you all for your service. Mr. Horack?
Much appreciated. I think I speak on behalf of all of us that we truly are dedicated to the kids, and that's why we get up and come here and spend as much time as we do. And we appreciate everything that we're allowed to do, and we appreciate the teachers and administration and all them for their support of us. So thank you very much. That brings us to item C4.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The artwork there at the back of our boardroom is provided by the students of Greens Prairie Elementary and Rock Prairie Elementary. So make sure, I mean, obviously, we've seen what they develop into, but this is where it all starts. So make sure you see where it all begins, because we have some phenomenal students in our district. Brings us to item D, Consent Agenda. And on Consent Agenda are items E2, E3, E4, item G, H3, I1, I2, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7. And that is all. Do I have any discussion or anything need to be removed?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, and motion carries 7-0. Moves us to item E1, Board Directions and Reports Announcements and Superintendents. Who would like to start?
DIC met last Wednesday. The main two items were choosing, selecting a calendar, which is, we heard in the workshop, and we will vote on H2 tonight on calendar B. And then Ms. Amy Drawz gave a esser update, so.
I will report on Intergovernmental Committee first. We met today, actually, for the first time this year, I guess it was January, and we talked about, we had an update on establishing a medical examiner's office, and they are still in the investigation stage, and there is positive momentum to establishing our own office. Also, we received an update from Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts Regional Scouting Activities, and they, you know, kind of told us the things that they're involved in. And they'll be doing this year, they're going to be doing a big spring, they're calling it Spring of Service. So they're going to be looking for activities in the community that they can, that they can do, things that they can help with. So if you're, get asked by Boy Scouts, talk to them. Spring of Service. And then also, I will report on Head Start. The big thing is that the federal review starts February 7th. So we are ready, and that's going to be a big deal. And then also, I mean, on Consent Agenda, the other thing that happened at the meeting, we went over the eligibility criteria, and that was approved at Head Start meeting, and that was on Consent Agenda tonight. Thank you.
I have a few to report, so bear with me through these. I have Shaq, first of all. Shaq is still meeting in their committee, subcommittee format. So just, we've broken up to kind of tackle a few issues. The whole group will come back together next month and hopefully kind of agree on the next steps forward there. Also, the Academic Achievement and Class Rank Committee met last week, and if you want more details, we had a presentation from Ms. Parkinson during the workshop, but we continue to make progress through some of the key decisions we need to make as a group there. I think we've made two big ones, and we're hashing out the third big decision right now. But making, making good progress, an important progress, and I said before, I think Ms. Nolan pointed out, thanks to that great group that shows up every time we meet, they've had, we have had good attendance, and it's from people in the community, and staff, and teachers that are all coming together to help come up with the best recommendation for this important decisions. And there will be some continued ongoing meetings there. And then the other one, happily, I got to attend my first Education Foundation meeting. So I just rolled on to that committee, and it's very exciting, excited to be a part of that fabulous organization, you know, and all they do for our, our community. Obviously, the big news with Education Foundation is 50 Men Who Can Cook is right around the corner. So February 4th, that Friday, it's all set still, lots of, lots of cooks here in our, in our midst, I hear. So lots of award-winning chefs in our midst. Tickets are for sale. You can purchase them from any Education Foundation board member, like me. They're also, they're also, not Jeff, like me, and they're also available on, you can do it through the website as well, I have to say that. And even if you can't go, you can obviously still support that wonderful fundraiser for the Education Foundation, and you can even buy a ticket to the raffle on the, on the website. I do have to kind of share, so that's the exciting, good news about the Education Foundation, but I also want to share the not-so-good news that happened with the group this week. I know many of you know, we lost an important, very important, meaningful board member from the Education Foundation when Margot Daley passed away earlier this month. She was a very active board member on Education Foundation for, I think she served over nine years. She was president for a while. She was the chairperson for the 50 Men Who Can Cook. She was just a, provided so much giving and service to our community, and very specifically to the students of CSISD. So she will be greatly missed, and we, our thoughts are with her, her family. And I also, I want to add another event that I attended, unfortunately, another funeral over this last month. I also want to point out the passing of one of our dear teachers at CONSOL, Mr. Chad Cryer. And I attended really primarily as a parent to, for my daughter, because she was one of his very fortunate students, who she got to have him. And I really just want to point out, first of all, that the student representation at that funeral was so moving when Mr. Cryer's father asked the students there to stand up and be recognized, and there were probably a couple of hundreds, I mean, it was just, it was pretty overwhelming. Just, he made a difference in so many of those students' lives, and it just is a reminder that how much all the educators in our district, in our, in our community, in our nation, and how much of a difference they make in, in student lives every day. So I wanted to just, you know, thank both those people for all they've done, and their families, and our hearts are with them. So sorry about that kind of downer, but buy your tickets and hope to be celebrating on February 4th. That's, thank y'all.
Any others? All right, superintendent update, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horack. I just want to point out on tickets, I too am selling tickets. Everybody else's are $80, mine are 75, so come see me. Superintendent's update, so let's just get to this right away. It's no secret, I continue to be impressed by our folks. The number of active cases throughout our district, whether with our faculty and staff and our students, has went up significantly through the course of last week. We'll see how we trend this week. And as I mentioned, our principal, several weeks ago, the, we've been through, the bad thing is, we've been through this, and we're going through it again. We experienced this the first of the year in August, August and September. The good thing is, we've been through this, and folks know what to do. And so I know we have campus administration, central office administration, we have enrichment specialists, instructional coaches, we have folks filling in, just wherever it needs to be filling in and taking care of things to make sure that we're having class for our students. And we're, this is occurring throughout the state and nation, but I just want to make sure that, again, I publicly thank our folks for making things happen for our students on a daily basis and going above and beyond. That's exactly what I would expect them to do. So thanks to all of those folks. So just some data as to what we're experiencing at this point in time. We do provide employee testing in the mornings here at Central Office through the course of last week. This is Monday through Friday of last week, on average. So of course, it varies day to day, but on average, through the course of last week, we were testing 55 employees a morning, averaged 15 positive throughout each day last week for a positivity rate of 28%. I can tell you today, this will happen on a Monday or a day back after a longer weekend, numbers kind of pile up on the first day of the week. Today, tested 94 employees with 33 positives. So we expressed 35% positivity rate. And as I mentioned, our principals, several weeks ago, the, the, we've, we've been through, the, the bad thing is, we've been through this, and we're going through it again. We experienced this the first of the year in August, August and September. The good thing is, we've been through this, and folks know what to do. And so, I know we have campus administration, Central Office Administration, we have enrichment specialists, instructional coaches, we have folks filling in, just wherever it needs to be filled in and taking care of things to make sure that we're having class for our students. And we're, this is occurring throughout the state and nation. But I just want to make sure that, again, I publicly thank our folks for making things happen for our students on a daily basis and going above and beyond. That's exactly what I would expect them to do. So, thanks to all of those folks. So, just some data as to what we're experiencing at this point in time. We do provide employee testing in the mornings here at Central Office through the course of last week. This is Monday through Friday of last week, on average. So, of course, it varies day-to-day, but on average, through the course of last week, we were testing 55 employees a morning, averaged 15 positive throughout each day last week for a positivity rate of 28%. I can tell you today, this will happen on a Monday or a day back after a longer weekend. Numbers kind of pile up on the first day of the week. Today, tested 94 employees with 33 positives. So, we expressed 35% positivity rate today. Substitute request, so I can just keep delivering the good news, but I know our principals and our folks know this, because they're experiencing it firsthand. On average, last week, we averaged 196 requests and had a fill rate of 133. So, a 68% fill rate through the course of last week. Today, we had 190 requests and 116 fill rate for 62%. So, I know that, again, folks are just stepping in, filling in where they have to. We managed this surge in the fall, and we'll continue to do so this month as well, and hopefully, within the next week or so, that we'll see a trend the other direction. But I just want to thank our folks for, for taking care of business. We had 100 new cases today. The number of active on Friday were 251. Our active count today is 244. So, if you take in the number of new cases, we had 114 that were considered recovered, that returned to the system. So, it's, it's moving rather rapidly based on some of the data that we have. So, with those things behind us, I want to kind of touch on a couple of other things. You will begin to see, or the board will be considering a couple of different items this evening, purchase items that are a result of our November 21 bond. So, we just want to thank our community again, as the board considers those items. One has to do with technology and student laptops, and another in the area of fine arts and band uniforms for CONSOL. And of course, we'll begin having conversations about future land acquisition and all of this. These are things that we can consider and do for our students due to the generosity of, of our taxpayers here in CSISD. So, we're appreciative for that. We recognized some Allstate Orchestra earlier. We did have five of their students named Allstate by Texas Music Educators Association last week, four from choir and one from band. So, I'm sure we'll have them at a future board meeting to recognize those kiddos as well. So, that wraps up Superintendent's update. Mr. Horak?
All right. That brings us to item F, Hearing of Citizens. Nothing, so we will move on to item H1, Receiver Report Related to Science Instruction in College Station ISD. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Our coordinator of science, Amanda Gibson, is ill at this, ill this evening. So, we're going to need to push this report to next month, and we'll double up. It includes science instruction, as well as an additional report to stay on track. But she's under the weather, so we're going to push that item to, to next month, Mr. Horak.
Okay. We will move to item H2, Consider Approval of the 2022-23 College Station ISD School Calendar. Mr. Martindale.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Horak. We have our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Penny Trammell. Of course, you reviewed this with the board earlier at the workshop, but we will share, share results from the DEIC meeting and voting along the lines of the 22-23 school calendar and bring forth the calendar for, that we're requesting the board approve for next school year. Dr. Trammell?
Good evening, everyone. As indicated in the board workshop, on behalf of DEIC, we are bringing forward Calendar B to recommend to the board for the 22-23 school year. It did receive 56 of the, percent of votes from the two calendars posted online. It does contain things that have been said in the past to be important to some of the stakeholders with a midweek start for teachers and students. There's a little bit of difference in the week of Thanksgiving for teachers with a couple of comp days there. And similar to this year, there is a comp day when we come back from the winter break. And we will have, once again, a staff development day on President's Day. Good Friday off on April the 7th. The difference with this calendar would be also that we do have a professional development day on the 27th, which we have had in the past. So, with that, just very brief review. We do come tonight seeking a recommendation for Calendar B to be our calendar for the 22-23 school year.
I'd move to approve Calendar B as presented for the 2022-2023 CSISD school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Calendar B will move forward.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to item J1, Consider Approval of the Purchase of 2,000 Student Laptops in the Amount of $898,000 from Avanex through the DIR Co-op Contract, DIR TSO 4159 utilizing 2021 Bond Funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak and board members. This is the first of two different purchases this evening we're bringing forward, again, resulting from our November 21 bond election. This particular purchase, technology student laptops, 2,000 of those units for $898,000 from Avanex. With any additional details or feeling, any questions, is our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Amy Drawes.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, members of the board. So, this is probably the, the first of many on purchase requests out of the 2021 bond funds. This one being, as mentioned, the technology, this was part of Proposition B, the separate one for technology devices. So, the technology department researched various student devices that they thought would be best, balancing educational and functional use, along with durability and, of course, cost. They analyzed, after they did the research and solicited quotes, two viable bids were submitted. And of that, Avanex proved the best value to the district and was also low bid in the amount of $898,000. This, these 2,000 laptops, some will be additional units for the district, but others will be replacing some of the older devices. So, we're not gaining a net of 2,000. We're going to be taking some of the older devices offline. So, it's a combination. The goal is to have these delivered and in place this year to be utilized for testing in the spring. So, it's a pretty quick turnaround on these particular items. So, entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? We're looking for a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes 7-0. And we've got laptops coming. Brings us to item J2. Thank you, Ms. Drawes. I think you're staying up there, though. Item J2, Consider Approval of the Purchase of Band Uniforms for A&amp;M Consolidated High School in the Amount of $1,449, 149,919 from Fred J. Miller, Inc. through the Buy Board Purchasing Co-op Contract Number 587-19 utilizing 2021 Bond Funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Board members, again, our second purchase relative to November 21 bond funds. As stated in the agenda item, this is for new band uniforms for Tiger Band, I believe. The current uniforms next year would be entering their ninth year. Shelf life for these items are eight to 10 years. So, this would allow us to replace uniforms, add a little bit of inventory for the growth of the program. And these are very comparable in makeup to the uniforms we bought at College Station High School a few years ago. With additional details, Ms. Drawes.
Thank you again. I appreciate it. So, as mentioned, this one is part of Proposition A, not B. It's very important, because we cannot commingle the funds between these two. So, our, our business office is going to do a very good job of keeping it all separate. But Mr. Eeks, Director of Fine Arts, along with the assistant, the director and the assistant at A&amp;M Consolidated High School and students, this past fall kind of looked at the, the type of uniform they would be looking at, a similar design, and then sent out to two very well-known band uniform vendors that customized them and got two prototypes. So, they looked at the prototypes for a number of things, for overall appearance, for the quality, the color. Some materials, they say maroon, but they look very different. So, they want to make sure the color is there. The hat is what they were looking for. They're looking for versatility so that they can add overlays to them, and they still look very good. So, after examining both prototypes, the committee selected FMJ, or Fred J. Miller, their design to, for the new uniforms for A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Looking at 231 uniforms, that will give them a variety of sizes, as well as accommodate for growth in the program over the coming years. So, I will entertain any questions regarding this particular recommendation.
I move that we approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item to item K1, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution to Renew an Interlocal Agreement with Brazos County, Texas for a School Resource Deputy Program for five years beginning March 1st, 2022. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak and board members. We have our Executive Director of Facilities, Mr. John Hall, here with additional information related to the renewal of our interlocal agreement with Brazos County Sheriff's Office to provide school resource deputies. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, members of the board. It's a real pleasure to be bringing this renewal document to you this evening for such a key piece of our safety program. To give you just a little bit of backup on this, back in February of 2017, the Board of Trustees of College Station ISD approved our initial interlocal agreement, or ILA, with Brazos County Sheriff's Office through Brazos County, creating our School Resource Deputy Program. At that point, we started it with five SRDs who were distributed across the school district at our three high schools and two of our middle schools. So, fast forward a couple of years, in November of 2019, we were opening up Welburn Middle School. We needed an additional SRD, and at that time, we also added an SRD sergeant to the program to oversee the others in the program. So, at that point, we were up to a total of seven SRDs. And it's remained at that, at that level from that time until now. So, since the original program was put in place in 2017, the Brazos County Sheriff's Office has provided CSISD with school resource deputies at all of our high schools and middle school campuses to fill a critical safety and security role for the school district. The current ILA document will expire as of February 28th, 2022. It's amazing to me how quick that, that five years flew past. Seems like we were just talking about this. So, now it's time to renew that, that ILA document. And so, members of the Brazos County Sheriff's Office and CSISD, we've reviewed the, the document and updated the current ILA document for renewal for another five-year term that would be active until February 28th, 2027, five more years. This new document consolidates the original ILA with the amendment that was improved, approved in 2019. And the only other change is just extending the timeframe by five years. So, before I get to the recommendation, I would say that this has been a very positive and successful program. And I'd like to do a little shout-out, thank you to our friends over at Brazos County Sheriff's Office for their, for their continued support for the past five years. It's been just, just a great arrangement, a great collaboration between our two organizations thus far. So, it's recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District approve the renewal of the School Resource Deputy Interlocal Agreement between Brazos County and the College Station Independent School District for five years beginning March 1st, 2022. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have about this.
I move to approve as presented.
A second.
All right, if there's no discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, that will move us to item L, Executive Session. We have two items. The board will meet in executive session to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, because the deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. Another item, L2, the board will meet in executive session to discuss superintendent mid-year review. We will see y'all back here shortly, maybe. All right, I want to thank everybody for staying, and we are adjourned.